The next item is a first look at a review of our capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2024, 2025, and also providing a decades-long look into fiscal year 2033, 34. And Lenny Pritchard is here to give you a look at that. And just from a timeline perspective, as we get started, we'll have an opportunity also to review this at our next work session and then would be seeking approval at the November 9th monthly meeting.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Cashwell. Today I will share our proposed capital improvement plan for the fiscal 2024, 25-year funding request and share our tentative long-range capital plans through 2033, 34. Each year, the Board is asked to consider and approve a capital improvement plan which includes projected funding amounts needed for maintaining and growing our facilities, as well as funding for transportation and technology infrastructure. The CIP is only funded one year at a time, but to provide context for the current CIP under consideration, we also provide the Board a look at the Division's long-range capital plans going out a decade. Doing annual CIP planning allows the Division to develop and maintain a comprehensive list of planned upgrades, renovations, and improvements, and schedule them as funding is available, as well as to consider how bonds may be leveraged to fund such needs. While we know our plans and needs can change or do change year to year as new CIPs are introduced, the long-range planning keeps us focused and on track with keeping our buildings in good condition for teaching and learning. Before we look at the proposed CIP, I'll provide an historical picture of our current school facilities. On the screen, you can see a historical timeline with original construction dates of our schools by decade. We have 100 years of school construction represented here, not including construction renovation projects. As you can see, our first schools were opened in the 20s with Montrose, Short Pump, and Verona Elementarys. The original structures for each of these still stands as part of the current school complex. You can see that as populations grew in the county during particular periods of time, so did construction efforts or school construction efforts, with the most growth boom taking place in the county in the 1950s. This slide provides an overview of our schools. Henrico County Public Schools has 73 schools encompassing more than 7 million, 7.6 million square feet. 72.6 of our facilities are more than 30 years old, and 60.3 of our facilities are more than 50 years old. I will now move to our next highlighted area to provide an update on the 2016 and 22 bond projects and our other current projects. We are finalizing the last of the 2016 bond projects, and I am pleased to share updates on Adams Elementary. Design is completed, and the construction rebid has been moved up from late December and will go out next week. Construction should begin in February, March of 2024. Once again, we want to share our gratitude to the citizens of Henrico for the overwhelming support of the 22 bond referendum. This will allow ACPS to address school construction projects over the next six years, to address aging infrastructure, potential growth and development, and ensuring innovative teaching and learning environments. This list on the slide notes the specific bond projects that were approved and planned in a timeframe for each project. Year-one projects have already begun with the design of Longan and Jackson Davis Elementary School. Mosley Architects is the designer for these prototype projects. Community meetings have already been held, and we will expect this to go out for construction bid in March of April of 24. We would like to again say thank you to the citizens of Henrico County for their continued support of ACPS. This slide shows the funded projects that were started in fiscal year 2022. You'll note the important career technical program expansions and renovations for both the ACE Centers at Hermitage and Highland Springs High Schools, which were approved by both this Board and the Board of Supervisors and funded in a previously approved CIP. The ACE Projects were designed by Quinn Evans Architects and construction by Cambridge Construction Company. Construction is nearing completion on both projects and hopefully opening for our students in January of 2024. These projects will ensure world-class CTE programming and state-of-the-art teaching and learning spaces, as well as 900 more seats for students interested in participating in these programs. The Campus of Virginia Randolph, previously listed as a project for future year on the CIP, was funded through the ESER III grant. This project for a renovated and rebuilt Campus of Virginia Randolph will allow the Division to expand innovation, one-of-a-kind alternative programming to meet the diverse and unique needs of our students. The project has been designed by Mosley Architects, and Cambridge Construction has started the project with the new building as the first phase. Using meal tax funds, we have begun the process to phase in and build three new auditoriums on our campus-style middle schools. Quinn Evans has been selected for design for all of the auditorium projects. Takahoe will have a school-based community input meeting scheduled soon and plan for a construction bid to go out in spring of 2024. We will then start paperwork for Brooklyn's auditorium after then. The CIP cycle allows us to plan our future projects. This slide lists future projects not shown on our current CIP draft, but which represents long-range plan, projection planning, and planning efforts. The list represents future projects currently identified as needing to be addressed in years eight through 10 of our long-range plan. As long-range planning continues, additional projects could be added. The first five schools on the list were evaluated in our first capital facilities pre-planning study and are listed as renovations accordingly. The cost will have to be determined once a starting time is designated for these projects, that the cost also includes inflation for that time. The last five schools on the list are in the process of a capital facilities pre-planning study to determine priority order and whether they are best suited for rebuilding or renovation. If we remain on track through FY '33, we will have renovated and/or rebuilt all schools in Henrico built prior to 1990. Looking a little beyond 10 years, we can see that we will be back to the very first schools that were renovated in the late 80s and 90s. These schools shown in red represent some of our oldest original structures with added additions throughout the years. These schools are also undergoing a capital facilities pre-planning study. Our ongoing capital facility pre-planning study will provide systematic evaluation of each location, as well as the ability to consider replacement of facilities in lieu of renovation. The schools will be evaluated based on structure components, that's mechanical and structural, facility site layout, and flexibility of the existing plans and circulation. The results allow for well-informed decisions which support responsible planning and long-range capital improvement goals. We do recommend that all school facilities go through this type of evaluation as part of the CIP planning process. Looking now at the mechanical funds included in the CIP, you will note that the current allocation is 1.5 million. The request for 2024 is $8 million. We recognize that this is a significant increase, but we are preparing for the elimination of other funds that have been available to ACPS through ESER funds and grants. To put it simply, additional funding is needed to keep up with our mechanical breakdowns, aging systems, and yearly inflation. In the past four years, schools have spent over $22 million using ESER grants, meals tax funds, and on top of the $6 million provided for CIP funding the past four years. This equals $28 million spent on heating and cooling, and we have yet to reduce the mechanical project list. ACPS has received the same 1.5 million CIP mechanical funds since 2000. This is not enough to reduce our mechanical projects. Looking at roofing projects, replacing aging roofs at schools is not just a matter of convenience, it's essential to the integrity of the building, energy, efficiency, health, aesthetics, compliance, property value, and cost savings. Proactively addressing roof issues ensures that the school can continue to provide a safe and conducive learning environment for years to come. The numbers shown on this slide are based primarily on our metal retrofit roofing systems. We have some aged slate roofing, as well as low-slate membrane roofing to consider as In order to address our aging playgrounds at our elementary schools, the CIP seeks to program $1 million to establish an ongoing replacement plan allowing equipment to be replaced every 11 to 12 years to ensure current safety standards are met. Each elementary school has a playground set for grades K through 2 and another for grades 3 through 5. Each playground set costs $150,000, each totaling $300,000 per school. We identified some one-time funds to begin playground replacements for our most aged equipment immediately, but with this $1 million CIP request, we will begin replacing our 32 oldest structures in most need of replacement and then ensure ongoing replacement cycles as needed. I would also note that when we first began the playground replacement process with cost projections, we planned for four projects each year. With increased costs, however, that $1 million will fund three schools a year. We continue to leverage meals tax funding for deferred maintenance projects at our schools. We remain grateful to both the school board and the Board of Supervisors for this funding to help maintain our 73 facilities. The funding has been utilized for security projects such as vestibules and camera systems replacements. It has also allowed us to replace gym floors, bathroom upgrades, carpet replacement, lighting upgrades, and parking lot improvements. Annually, meals tax funds are used for projects across all school levels in all five magisterial districts. We will continue to use the $9 million, the $9 million meals tax money on various deferred maintenance projects at schools not covered in the CIP. To date, we have done 425 meals tax projects at a cost of over $87 million across all I'd like to thank this Board and the Board of Supervisors for the support to replace our aging bus fleet. Last year's CIP included important funding for bus replacements. Since the approval of the last CIP, we have used CIP and ESER funds to purchase 147 full-passenger buses with climate control and 76 educational, exceptional educational lift buses with climate control. This totals 223 new buses purchased the last four years with this Board's help. These funds have allowed us to decrease the bus fleet's age, thus reducing fuel costs and repair costs. It has also improved driver workspace, as all new buses are equipped with climate control and technology upgrades that will help make the department improve on efficiency and effectiveness. Transportation funds in the CIP are also important as we address the needs of our aging vehicle fleet. These are our work vehicles that are not just our school buses. Just as student transportation is important, we must maintain an infrastructure for ACPS vehicles that will allow us to continue to service our school division. And this CIP funding of $6 million for vehicle replacement will ensure we address and maintain our aging bus and vehicle fleet. I would like to again say thank you to this Board and the Board Supervisor for support technology infrastructure funding. Last year's $2 million CIP commitment provided additional funding to continue our large-scale technology project to provide innovative and the latest generation of display technologies in ACPS classrooms that did not have display technology or had old unsupported display technology. In Phase 1 with technology funds, we purchased 1,400 Promethean panels, which allowed us to fit 35% of our classrooms, receiving new panels across the district where they focus on the schools and the classrooms most in need. In Phase 2, in FY '22, '23 with CIP funds, we placed an additional 265 Promethean panels in classrooms across all levels. And in Phase 3, in '23, '24, these CIP funds are allowing us to purchase an additional 365 Promethean panels to upgrade display technology in all of our classrooms across the Division. And this concludes the presentation. We will be seeking the Board's approval for our preliminary CIP at the November monthly Board meeting, and then will provide our proposal to the Board of Supervisors so that it may be considered during their budget deliberations. Once approved by the Supervisors, it will return to this Board for your final approval. And at this time, I'll take any questions.
Thank you so much for that presentation, Mr. Pritchard. We're so appreciative. I'm going to start today with, for questions and comments, with Ms. Atkins.
Thank you for the presentation. I have a few responses, and I'll start with our schools. It's great to see the progress that we're making. I'll also ask that we explore sources for funding with our Board of Supervisor counterparts to add John Roth Middle School to the list of projects. I would hope much, much sooner, whether it's the '23, '29 plans, but certainly sooner than what we have it slated for. Both John Roth and Quiacasen Middle Schools were constructed in the 1970s, and I think that's very important. I know we have a process that we use so that we are using a system that makes sense so that we can do the best we can to be fair. However, there are always other important factors when we look at whether we're rebuilding, adding on, just trying to improve our building so that our students can have a 21st-century level education with learning. And so please do look into that and explore that, and I'd love to get an update once we learn more about the possibilities there. The other part that I want to draw our attention to is our high school culinary arts programs. I know that they travel quite a bit, and if you could share with me, we may already be exploring this, but the possibility of our culinary art programs to have a van for transportation as they continue to service the Division, service students, I think it would be wise that they also are added to the list for a vehicle. Is that something that's on there already?
Not to my knowledge, but it's something that we can look into, and we can provide an update as needed.
Wonderful. The other area that I'd like to learn more about is, it's been a while. I'm looking at the last update on our vehicles for drivers' education, as well as for CTE and family engagement. I see that some of the vehicles we ordered have been received, but I would like an update on the vehicles that our students certainly need for the driver's ed. We want to make sure that they are learning how to drive in good vehicles. And so if you could provide that for me, and again, it's for driver's ed, family engagement, CTE, and facilities, an update on where we are with that.
Yes, ma'am. I'll be glad to give you an update. I know that when we started down this road last year replacing our vehicles other than buses, we went through some of the same issues that we've constantly had with the supply chain issues. And while we have started receiving some of those vehicles, some of them have not come back in, but I will be glad to give you a detailed report of the vehicles that have come in and where they've been placed and what we're still waiting to expect to come in.
What are we doing in the meantime while we're waiting on the vehicles?
Well, we're doing the best we can with what we have. I mean, but that is what drives maintenance costs up when you don't have newer vehicles. But I mean, I know that we've made adjustments to our budgets to accommodate that as well.
Are we exploring renting vehicles in the process, you know, while we're waiting? Is that feasible or no?
I mean, it's something that I think that we could look into.
Okay, because I'm more concerned, all of these areas are important, but when we're teaching our children how to drive, I think that we want to make sure that we are putting them in the best vehicles possible. So I appreciate your response, and I look forward to an update on these. And it's quite a bit of money. It's disappointing that they are on backlog, and I know we're doing everything that we can. I just want to make sure that we are trying to explore everything in these different spaces. And I know I'm just going to advocate for our family engagement teams who are going out to families quite often. And I have witnessed some of the vehicles myself. And to those, I want you to know that if you are in those situations, you are in those vehicles, that we are working very hard to find ways to ensure that you are getting to these families that need you as best as you can and safely. The most important part of this is just being in a safe vehicle, so I want you guys to know that. And I'm glad you've come. If you could share an update, that would be great.
Absolutely. I can speak for family and community engagement. We received a fleet of about 30 new cars and trucks. And so earlier this year, we had a long wait, but Lenny's team and John's team as well were really persistent in making sure that we got vehicles. So we are up to speed and got more than we expected.
I am so happy to hear about that because I'm just going down this extensive list. And as I keep looking and I'm telling myself I'm done, then I'll see a whole nother category, whether it's, like I said, CTE, the facilities team, and I'm looking at the dollar value, and it's quite a bit. So I'm very happy to hear that. Thank you so much for that update. And that's all that I have.
Thank you so much, Ms. Atkins. Reverend Cooper.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Pritchard, thank you again for this exhaustive update. Appreciate that. Question that I have, question that I get quite frequently is in regards to middle schools. With plans cited for the construction of new elementary schools, recent rebuilds for two high schools, and all the growth particularly projected in northern, western Fairfield District corridor, how do we plan for middle schools? Meaning, what considerations are taken into account to have a new middle school constructed? What do we, how do we base that?
Are you talking about a replacement of our existing middle schools in general?
No, new one, just...
Well, I mean, I think there would be a capacity need that would come up and look at that. And I know that that's through school planning and also through the county planning department. We work hand in hand in looking at these things, and that there is going to be an elevated increase of student enrollment in a particular area. A lot of the development that is taking place is this urban mixed-use, which has not really yielded the students with the growth of those particular developments. So we have been kind of stabilized at that point, and we've actually seen, you know, with our enrollment trends, an actual slightly decline. So there hasn't been any kind of need or push for that part of it yet for a middle school.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And it's important for people to hear that, just to know that we do make sure we're ahead of what might be projected per the yield. Next question quickly, the auditorium projects, how much are they costing? Are they the same price per...
They will be. I mean, we're hoping that over the course of time, it doesn't catch us. I mean, as inflation starts to increase up, I mean, we will know once we put it out the bid what we're going to face at that particular point in time. But they are on back-to-back heels of each other. So as we get one up and running, the process will begin for the other, and once that one's up and running, we will begin the process for the next one. So we are looking for this to be consecutive projects back to back to back.
Really excited about all three. On mechanical heating and cooling, we all know the challenges that we experience, and you just basically said we don't have enough money to keep up with the need for replacement and fixing. What can we do proactively, proactively next year to make sure that what we kind of experienced this year may not happen next year? Or, you know, what are your thoughts?
Well, one of the things that I know that we've done is we're going to go back through and turn systems on a lot sooner, so that way we can troubleshoot problems sooner rather than closer to the date of when faculty members do come back. We do try to be prudent with taxpayer dollars and be concise about when we turn those back on. But given the nature of what's happened and looking at some of our systems, it would be best to turn them on and go through there. And I know that once we started our HVAC back up, they never really came off that Friday of, I think it was the 19th of August, they stayed on all the way through September. So we ran those things to make sure that cooling stayed in our buildings all, at least all fall.
Yeah, and I would note that, you know, certainly lots of proactive strategies to make sure we're looking at our systems often and early, and particularly as we come back online after the summer months. But, you know, I would note that, and I think Lenny pointed out, the allocation under that area of our CIP has been the same for, what year did you say?
2000.
2000. So, you know, certainly we know, even if systems were just aging out normally, if you would just account, you know, for inflation, that's a significant increase. So we have to make up the difference otherwise. So, you know, we certainly don't put off systems work because of the cost, and certainly we have to find other ways to fund it. And we've been able to leverage these additional grant monies and so on, any other funding source. It's meant shifting things throughout our CIP because we're going to get the work done. But what we'd like to do is have a CIP that has that line item accurately reflect the kind of funding we're actually spending. We've been actually spending much more than that amount, even though that's what we were allocated. And so what it means is pulling it from other places.
Well, you know, that's definitely a line item that we need to have increased. I mean, definitely agree with that. Last question for me pertains to playground equipment. Thank you for clarifying the process, the three per year with the money allocated. Do PTAs or any outside corporate funding play any part with our playgrounds as far as do individual schools, do they raise money for their playgrounds?
I know that it has in the past, but these numbers have gotten so large, most PTAs can't use or raise that kind of funding.
And we're committed. That's a part of the school and the school programming, and so that's part of our responsibility and upkeep. We sort of wouldn't look to a PTA to do that. Beautification projects, whatever, I do know in the past there have been some playground-related PTA projects, but it's our commitment to make sure we're keeping our playgrounds up to date and meeting all the requirements needed for those structures.
Thank you, Ms. Pritchard.
Dr. Cashwell has asked for a baseline for all of our schools across the counties to remain equitable, so...
And that's, thank you for that, that last statement, because you knew I was kind of going with that. So thank you for that. I'm done, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Reverend Cooper. Ms. Agburn.
Thank you. I'm going to chime in on the PTA playground thing. That was one of the first projects that I worked on as a parent when I moved here in the late 90s, was building the playground at Short Pump Elementary. So then they cost $40,000. Now we're looking at 150. So I am so glad this has become a priority and that we're not putting this on the backs of PTAs. It's become a number that PTAs just can't do. And we were able to do it back then only because the Board of Supervisors allocated matching funds for what we raised, they matched, and then we were able to build playgrounds. But it shouldn't be on the backs. You're right, Dr. Cashwell. It's part of the school, it's part of our PE program, it's part of what we offer children. It used to be schools were not built with playgrounds, so PTAs had no choice. But now they are, and so I'm really, really glad to see that change. I think that's a definite positive step in the right direction, but off of the backs of our parents. But I wanted to go back to Reverend Cooper's discussion of the mechanical. You said there's a shortfall, we're not covering, you know, the budget amount doesn't cover the expense. So what is the shortfall? Do we have a number of how much more we are spending than that number?
Approximately. So we've been allocated the 1.5 million. We believe we need 8 million. So the delta would be about 7 million on an annual basis for the heating and cooling. And then for the roofing, I believe the delta is about 3 million. So had been getting 1.5, seeking 4 million there.
Right. Well, and I mean, obviously with increasing cost and it's hard to get these items these days, I'm sure that that has added to the cost here recently. But I think it would be, it would behoove us to be very specific in this ask when we take this forward to the Board of Supervisors and say, this is how much we weren't able to cover, even possibly listing those projects and saying we had to move funding from here and there, so that it's very clear what the need is and what the amount is.
And I would say they've been good partners in this, and that sometimes they've allocated funding to cover the items we've needed because they weren't able to be covered here.
Right.
But yes, I think, you know, what we'd like to do is have that sustainable source through the CIP rather than, you know, going over budget and having to tackle and get other funding sources and allocations as we go, since we know pretty regularly, I mean, the data we can look at over the years on what's actually spent on that line item versus what was allocated.
Well, I think the more transparency we have on this as to, you know, what's not covered, I think is helpful, not only to our constituents and stakeholders, but to the Board of Supervisors, the funding body there. They need to know that if they've allocated a certain amount of money and it's not covering the cost, then it's got to be made up somewhere else. But second question, well, probably third, but are we going to, next month, get a list of our meals tax projects, or does that come later?
Yes, we'll get that to you.
Okay. And then the bond referendum projects, if we could go to that chart, that's my last thing.
I think it's Slide 6.
Just the timing of the bond referendum projects. And full disclosure, obviously, Mr. Richard and I have talked about this before the meeting. And so I just, I just want to be... And so I just, I just want to be clear. I, I am concerned about the placement of the West End Elementary School new construction. I let Dr. Cashwell and Mr. Pritchard know because, and we've taught, without enrollment numbers, which we will get next month, it's hard for me to look at this list and go, okay, that makes sense, mainly because we always put capacity before anything else. And that is a chronic problem in the Three Chopped District. And we have schools that are operating, obviously, deep run is overcapacity, but this, not a high school on there, but our elementary schools are running at high capacity and our teachers are having, it's the most consistent issue that is brought to me by teachers and parents is large class sizes. It's, it is persistent in, across the district. And so capacity issues drive the train. And so I know with Jackson Davis, and as, as an aside, I am so appreciative of our community meetings that we've had in the last week and, and have responding to concerns of the neighbors that we met with just last night. And, you know, here, having those meetings with the staff and with the community as we are literally putting a construction zone in their neighborhood, I think is such a valuable thing. So I'm really appreciative of your efforts, Mr. Pritchard, to, and for the team, for Mrs. Moore and everybody to get that started. But after Jackson Davis and Longan are done, we'll really need to closely monitor what relief that those two projects give to the surrounding schools. And I think that will give us the information we don't have yet. So I would just ask as we go forward, that we really closely monitor. I know we are really tight in some of the schools. We may not be overcapacity in every school, but we're getting close. And so that the placement of an elementary school, to me, I would like to see why the, you know, I know that we've done the feasibility study, we've done this, and we're trying to be very practical as to why we place things when we do. And it's based on need, but we usually put capacity before.
And I, I would note that, and absolutely, you're absolutely right on a number of factors. So when the bond, when we were pitching those bond projects and as it was voted upon, this was the order established at that time. And it did take into account, of course, we have current year, membership will be analyzing to juxtapose to this, but it was done based on membership and enrollment and capacity at the time, as well as age and condition of the buildings. And, you know, while we'd love to put all of those in 2023, 2024, looking at issuing debt, debt capacity, bond funds, how they are allocated over time, the costs of each of these projects, and then what makes sense fiscally over that period of time.
Right.
So sometimes they were paired based on general cost along with prioritization. And so to your point, from a capacity perspective, we know that one piece of that puzzle is additional capacities created at Longan and Davis, and then how does that have an impact and so on? And then the build outs for new development, both related to the Fairfield area and the West End area, the way those build outs are timed, we were comfortable with this timeline based on what we were getting for information there and sort of where we are with capacity. But, you know, we know that, you know, the best laid plans, right? We're going to certainly take a look each year. There could be unforeseen, you know, enrollment or capacity trends coming our way. Certainly right now, we're trending down. We're in past years, and you'll see at our next meeting, we're finalizing the enrollment data and trend data. But I know even looking at state trend data for public education K-12, it's very much flatlining and lowering. And we've seen even last year when we looked at capacity, a number of our schools that had been tight had, we've seen lessened capacity issues. So that's something we'll be watching too, because we certainly don't want to be building more when we have fewer students, you know, projecting even out to, to 2026 and 2028 and making sure we're monitoring that.
Well, and, and see, when I look at schools that have trailers, and I know that some of, of those will be eliminated by the expansion of Davis and Longan, but I look at, you know, where we do have trailers at Ridge, at Three Chopped Elementary, there are schools that we have trailers. I just want to be sure that we're really paying attention to, to the numbers because it's a numbers driven game. The other concern I have with putting something out that won't even start until 2028, that means there's no way it can open until at least 2030. And that's a long time to ask people to be in a school that's crowded. And as, as Reverend Cooper rightly pointed out, we have a lot of, of new construction and development in the northern part of the county, in the Fairfield area and the far west. And where Fairfield and the West End and Three Chopped and Brooklyn all kind of come together right there at the top of the county, there's a lot of development planned. And that's what concerns me, that if it's, if it's out there seven years and you look at Quiocas and Johnson and Fairfield, it always happens that when we do these projects, they, sometimes they come out more expensive than we anticipate and the bond funds don't go as far as we thought we were. And that's why I'm concerned about it, is that there's possible with either cost overruns, which we can anticipate until the time the bids are out and all of that, that it has happened before where we go, well, we don't have as much money for this project as we thought we were going to by we get, time we get to the end of it. So when a capacity project is at the end, that's what concerns me. So I'll just, you know, I know you'll be monitoring it as we go forward, but that's, you know, the nuts and bolts of it for me, is that funding, it's, it's, it's a limited pot of money. And if we get to the end of it and the other projects have gone over, we may not have the funding for that capacity project. So anyway, I appreciate the, just the careful watching as we go forward and, and look forward to getting those capacity numbers in, in November that we will put with this, you know, do it together. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Ogborne. Mrs. Shea.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Pritchard, thank you for this robust look at many different angles of operations and their funding. I want to, three in a row, reloop back to that mechanical and roofing line item. And it's already been asked and answered, but let's just say one more time, when's the last time, how, how long has that been stagnant? Since what year?
2000.
2000, so over two decades. And would you say the market for these items, the cost has increased during that time?
Significantly, yes.
So not only are we not able to keep up because of that, what has the impact over the last three years been of putting stronger filters on our systems and constantly flushing it? Has that had an impact on our HVAC systems?
I, I would say yes. And I know when we talked about this during COVID, I made everyone aware that this could have been a, a cost of doing it. It was, you know, at the time, it was the right thing to do, was what was being recommended. But we are seeing that the strains of that, that has taken on some of our age systems. And I think that's part of why we're in the situation that we're in. And we're working our way out of this. I mean, we have an outstanding group of people that work on these systems every single day. They go out to schools, they do everything they can to get everything up and running. And, you know, they, they are the backbone of what's happening with this thing and they're staying on top of it. Our director, Ms. Moore, she's doing an outstanding job of keeping track of these systems as well. And we'll continue to make this happen every single day, you know. But, but yes, it's, it did have an impact, I'm sure it did.
Well, and, you know, absolutely doing what we needed to do to get students back in the building and in a healthy way, that was, that was and continues to be the right thing to do. But we're seeing a back end cost to that in terms of our systems. And so any way that we can continue to help advocate for you, not only to increase this light item in general, because costs have increased in the last 23 years, we also have more buildings than we did 23 years ago. But also because these systems have, you know, really, really gotten a workout the last couple of years. And so making sure that we're getting back ahead of that, anything we can do to help advocate for that, I, we're, we're on board. When we look at the $6 million for buses, do you have an approximation in our current market? How many buses is that ballpark?
Looking at it, and, and that's the, the thing of it, I remember when I first took this job back in 2019, how much has increased? We've gone from $119,000 to roughly $155,000 per bus in that short period of time. So we're roughly getting anywhere close to 38 to 40 buses roughly a year. But this, this $6 million, what has been attributed is to vehicle replacement, that's buses and vehicles. So, you know, if we have money, some funding's left over, it, it still takes a length of time to get a bus, but it's a lot easier, it has been a lot easier getting buses than it has an automobile. So we can, we can use that money however we need to make it happen.
It's also maintenance and upkeep, not just the replacement.
Yep.
And just for, for my, what's, what's this approximate size of our fleet? Like what order of magnitude are we looking at?
I thought you might answer, somebody would ask that question. So I do have an answer for you. Hang on one second, if you allow me.
I mean, we're looking at 500, we're looking at?
500, and let me see here, it is 574, and this includes our student activity buses.
Very, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Pritchard. All right, that just helps give me kind of a ballpark of, of what we're looking at, almost, you know, 10 percentish. All right, you mentioned for playgrounds that we're hoping to replace the 32 oldest structures. Is that 32 structures or 32 schools? Because right, a school, because you said there's two structures per school.
Yes. I mean, you have, you have two structures at each school. We're looking at the structures that are on, on that list. I mean, you know, our most significant ones. And then some of them have gotten kind of skewed, like you have one that's a little bit older than another. But once we start into a school, we're going to that school.
For example, it could be that a school has an older main play structure for grades three through five, but for some reason they've had a grant or something for early childhood and they have a new structure for primary. So that wouldn't be replaced. But generally, it's not per school because it's two structures per school.
So we're looking at like 16-ish.
With some exceptions. That's right. And then, you know, we were so grateful to receive the playground funding in the CIP, this additional million last year, because that's going to allow us to keep up with it, right, on a replacement cycle. So starting by replacing the oldest and just continuing that work, so.
Great. I was just trying to scope out if we're talking like five to six years or like 11 years, but it sounds like we're talking more five to six years to get through those 32 structures and then keeping up. Okay, fantastic. I just want to say, I certainly support, I appreciate that you and your team are doing assessments across the county to figure out where the biggest needs are, both for our playground structures and our feasibility structures of our buildings. I think that's so important as we look to be as fiscally responsible as possible and putting the, the money and the funds where the greatest need are. As Ms. Ogborne said, it's unfortunately not an endless pot of money where we can do everything at the same time. And so I'm being very skilled in that. Mr. Pritchard, I just want to be crystal clear for our public listening, the Quiocas rebuild continues to move on schedule, correct?
Yes, ma'am, the Re-Q. Yes, ma'am.
The Re-Q's moving, and the, the Tuckahoe auditoriums and the other auditoriums have no, the design of those has not had impact on the schedule of Quiocas, incorrect? They are separate, they're separate funding revenues, streams.
Yes.
Thank you. And then I'll just continue, as my board colleagues I know are so excited about, I will continue to be unyielding about keeping this Quiocas rebuild on track because of just the sheer need, the health of the building, the function of the building, the programming needs. Additionally, it's the only bond project or current capital project for schools in the Tuckahoe District. But it really comes back to that need, the health of the building, the, the function and the programming. And so I look forward to that continuing to move on track. So thank you so much for this look, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Shea. This is one of my, this is, outside of graduation and some other exciting things, this is one of my favorite times a year.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
It is, it is one of my favorite times a year because really it's the proactive planning and budgeting that I'm so proud as we look at, especially at page seven, and, and this slide as well, the bond that was so successful, but also slide seven, because what, these were meals tax, mostly meals tax with the exception of Virginia Randolph, which was SRR3 funding, that we are so fortunate to have the meals tax funding in an record. And I'm so proud that we, we really are looking at, as Ms. Ogborne said, like today really is part one. And then we get part two, which is capacity, and we get to confirm what, what we think, but we don't know, and look at projections because we are watching planning, planning committee and growth in the county that Reverend Cooper and Ms. Ogborne spoke to. And then this will all come back to us in December, if I'm correct, for a vote. Is that the correct timeline for this process?
Yes, and even after the Board of Supervisors look at our requests, then it'll come back to you again. So we'll get to spend a good bit of time with this. And, and of course, as Mr. Pritchard mentioned, opening up, we're, we're looking at requests for one year of CIP funding. But what I think, to your point, Mrs. Consella, the, the board spends so much time looking at the long-term plans and kind of massaging those each year based on new information, new development, looking at trends. And so it's time well spent as we're spending time forecasting and adding that additional context.
Well, and, and thank you for that. And then as I look at the, as I look at the playgrounds, I am very excited as to all the things that Mrs. Shea asked and were answered, because our PTAs are not ATMs. And I just appreciate the work that you guys have done to put us on a, a schedule for playground replacement as necessary. And then when I look at, for example, an HVAC unit that's on the agenda for this evening at the night meeting for approval, and then I look at the amount of $8 million per year, that really doesn't buy much for a high school HVAC unit. Are we feeling pretty good, we're feeling pretty good about that? I mean, like the, one HVAC, well, to cover one school this evening is four and a half million dollars, right? So I'm thinking, is that 8 million, we feel good about that number? And, and I'm grateful it's gone from, you know.
For maintenance and repair, and to keep us on a cycle now, of course, unforeseen things can happen. And, and then we would certainly work to identify funds outside of that line. But if, if we're able to get the requested amount and keep them up on the cycle we're looking to, then that would be reasonable. But certainly I think initially, you're, you're right, they're very costly.
They were very costly. Getting more expensive every day. Yeah, okay, thank you. So we do have a schedule, I mean, that even covers the unexpected, if you will, because there seems to have been quite a bit of unexpected. And I'm just grateful that we actually have made purchases recently, well, in the past year for Greenwood and Hermitage, and I believe Glen Allen Elementary School as well. Am I correct on that, Mr. Pritchard?
I believe so, yes.
And then we will be getting the meals tax itemization in the next month, I believe Ms. Ogborne spoke to that.
Yes.
I know she spoke to enrollment.
Well, both, you'll be getting both.
Yes.
And then as we're speaking to that, I'd like to put something on everyone's radar, which I think is a really creative project that Mr. Schmidt and I have been talking about and working on for all of our middle schools. Granted, it would be a pilot project at, beginning at one middle school, where it would be an outdoor learning lab. We have outdoor learning labs in high school, we have outdoor learning labs, for example, in our new elementary school projects, we have outdoor learning labs at the elementary, you know, across our elementary schools. It would be fascinating to have an outdoor learning lab slash field house for our middle schools, is the concept. And then coupled with that concept is also thinking of Regency and our Hermitage projects, where our students had a chance, had learning opportunities. I'm thinking of community partners, I'm thinking grants, I don't know. I just think it would be a learning opportunity somehow for our students start to finish that I look forward to discussing with colleagues and leadership. But I did want to at least put it on the radar today, saying I think it's an interesting opportunity for us at the middle school level. So thank you for that. And then that's all I had. Mr. Pritchard, thank you so much for your long, oh, let me thank you one more time, for our community meetings and school meetings with our Longan Elementary School community. They're so excited about the rebuild as a by.
Yep.
So thank you so much.
Thank you.